What I'm looking at is that we're looking at a doubling of money used to accomplish the same purchase, uh, purpose, which is what the Lieutenant Governor in LCVC does. Why are we establishing a new initiative when we have this particular task that's being completed at this point? I do know that in doing a little digging, I know LCVC has a good bit of money. I do know that LCVC and bear with me, I'm gonna go off here, but LCVC has, um, I understand they're looking for a new employee for sales of the Lafayette area. And that particular employee, if approved by LCVC or this council, would make somewhere between a hundred and 150,000 dollars. This is, and that's annually, this is money that could be used to accomplish the Crete goal. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I remember when Festival International needed a new building, the LPTFA found them a building for them to, to work out of. That was also something that was accomplished, so it was done locally. And I guess more or less to sum it up, Mr. Robideau, is that, as you know, I have a lot of people in my district that flooded along with a lot of other people in Lafayette Parish and other districts. I have people in my district that flooded in August that are still not back in their homes. When we get a half inch of rain, I get 20 or 30 phone calls. When we get two or three inches of rain, you can double that. Everyone I've, I've talked to, not to say that your initiative is not something that could benefit Lafayette, which I, in a lot of ways, I agree with you. But at this particular time, I think we need to look at what a priority is. Now, I want to take a step back, and this is before your time, so you're totally clear of this, and I want the public to know, but when this initial healthcare unit and animal control and all that was brought, I think, two or three years ago to the people to vote on it, to move this amount of money to animal control, there were a couple of council members up here that made a motion to move it into drainage at that point, but it was not done. We wanted to take all the excess monies instead of going to animal control and move it to drainage, and it did not happen. So with this right here, and some people say it's only a half a million dollars, but again, that's gonna increase with every year that goes by. It's gonna be a dedicated millage. So from what I've heard from many is that if this money can, can be used for drainage laterals that prevents one home from flooding, it's worth it. So with that said, I would like to make an amendment to take the amount that you have created for, create that percentage. Now, from when I looked at inside my book, and you said it was only, I think, what was it, 3%? In the book, I looked under there, was, was it .21 that was going to him? I need to make sure my-
It's .25 mils.
.25 mils. I want to take the .25 mils and also make an amendment to move that to drainage. And if, you know, next year or the time after and, and, and the priorities have changed, I would be more than happy, Mr. Robideau, to look at that particular one. But the people that I represent have, have all said, why are we putting everything into drainage that we can? Especially based on our past experience and what's happened here recently, so. Let me do that. Mr. Chair, I wanna, I wanna make an amendment to put the .25 mils, make an amendment to move that also, which means the total amount into drainage.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could respond before y'all take up a vote on the-
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was, I was just waiting for him to, um, finish formulating his amendment-
Gotcha.
So the legal could kinda fix it up for him a little bit, and while they fixing it up, we'll have additional comments-
Mr. Esq, you working on that right now? Mr. Robideau, go ahead, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, and, and certainly, let me, let me say that I appreciate the, the opportunity for us to disagree on, on items without being disagreeable. And we certainly disagree on this, and while I understand if the half a million dollars could save one house, I would argue that I think the half a million dollars with the return on investment that we're gonna get is gonna save many more houses than just one. And I, I, I respect Ben Berth a lot and his tourism organization. I respect the Lieutenant Governor and the work that they do, and I, I think they do a great job. But again, the T is, is one piece of create, and whatever we do to, to, um, to better strategically position the C, the R, the E, the A, and then the final E, will make the, the T's job that much easier. And we just need to, to capture this uniqueness that we have, to capitalize on it. And we're not giving any money to anybody. We're investing this money in what I would consider a very wise way to capture a lot more tax revenue, expand our tax base to a lot more visitors that will pay the hotel motel tax, that will pay the sales tax and all those other things. And lastly, we'll enhance this unique place to be an even more attractive quality of life place to live, so folks are gonna want to move here, work here, live here, play here, retire here, which will ultimately benefit drainage, roads, and all those other things that we so desperately need help with. And so I certainly appreciate your comments. I understand where you're coming from, and, and I appreciate the, the ability for us to disagree here without being disagreeable. Thank you.
And that's fine, and I agree. The, the point I wanna make is that if the people of Lafayette would approve moving the whole amount into drainage, that would be an immediate amount of money going into drainage. With what you're saying, and I understand, is that the possibility of the, the future economic activity would also provide additional dollars, but that won't be immediate. What I'm hearing from people is they want an immediate solution, and they want to see immediate action to stop their homes from flooding. So again, I, I understand, you've got your opinion, I've got mine, and the people we represent, so with that said, Mr. Esq, do you, you have in mind what, what I'm looking for here?
Hold, hold on one second, there's still someone else who wanted to speak. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, uh, I heard the comments from both, both sides, and I appreciate it. But I'd just like, uh, Mr. Terrio to note this, uh, I agree with you are saying. But I had a town hall meeting last week about Create, and the constituent that I represent, I mean, I had a, a good turnout, and they were all pleased with the, the Create. And I appreciate what you are saying, Mr. Robideau, as well. Uh, but before you make that amendment, I was wondering, maybe can we, instead of the 500,000 dollars or half a million dollars you're talking about, maybe can we, to get it started, lessen it instead of the full 500,000, is that be possible, that we can meet some kind of understanding? Cause it'd be, it's a great project, especially what you are saying about what people are doing, they're using the Cajun name, and although it may not be the food. I, I'd like to see, there's a lot of things going out there, the Creole, the soul food and everything. This is an opportunity for us to capitalize on all our unique, uh, unique things that we have in the, in the, uh, in the city of Lafayette. So I would hate to just give it up, if we can maybe come to something else like maybe a quarter of a million dollars or something like that. You know, I think, you know, I don't think we should just knock it out. And I understand what you are saying about the drainage, cause I have drainage issues myself in the district, not as quite as probably in your district, but I think with the, with the initiative of Create, I think it can do a lot of positive thing for tourism and bringing, bringing things to Lafayette, if we can perhaps maybe meet, meet those goals.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Nakka?
Yes, um, in District One, just like District Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, we all have drainage issues. But the one thing that makes Lafayette unique and what makes our culture what it is is important to this community. I like the President's plan. I think he's spent a lot of time, I think he's reached out to the arts and the culture. It is what Lafayette is. I just don't think we should, at this time, forget about what helps generate revenue in the city of Lafayette. In the past, I think we might have given Festival International X amount of dollars, but the return on investment between the hotels, the motels, the food, the restaurants, it really did a great thing for the city of Lafayette as well as promote Lafayette. And to lessen it from 500 to 200, or to get rid of it altogether, I think is in doing a disjustice to this community and what Lafayette and Akadiana stands for. Yes, I am a musician. I'm very rooted in culture and arts. Some people may say it's, well, that's why you feel that way. But if I didn't play music and I, and I wasn't an artist, I would have to say, what, what makes Lafayette unique? What, what, why do people come to Lafayette? And if you ask that question, think about how busy we are when Festival Kadyan and Creole is in town, when Festival International is in town. So whether you play music or you don't, you look at your heritage and your culture, what does Lafayette stand for? What does Lafayette have? It has culture, it has arts, it is creative. There's a lot of musicians that are Grammy nominees right here from Lafayette. We have some award winners. So I appreciate the fact that drainage is important in your district, but let's make no mistake, drainage is important to everybody. But at the same time, what do we, what is our, what is Lafayette? We're arts, we're culture. You know, so I'd like to commend the Mayor President for taking the time and to be creative. Cause the fact of the matter is not one councilman up here sat in a meeting and decided to rededicate these millages and try to be creative and help everyone out. The fact is, he did it. And to be here tonight for the time that he spent to turn around and kibosh it over 500,000 dollars, when that's the livelihood of this city, when 175,000 dollar investment for Festival International in the past has brought in 3 million dollars of revenue. There, there's no way you can convince me that this is a bad plan or that the town of Broussard, the Youngsville, or your District Nine is gonna suffer because of this account being creative. So I'm here to stand strong and stand behind Mayor President Robideau and behind the culture and the arts and what Lafayette stands for and what our heritage stands for. And I don't think this is a bad investment and a bad idea, I think it's a great idea. And I encourage everyone to stand strong because that is who we are. You don't have to be a musician to know what Lafayette does and what it does for the business and the economy. It's there, it's proven, the facts are there. That's my statement, thank you.
Mr. Terrio?
I, um, spoke with a couple, um, couple of days ago, and their first comment was is that when it's raining heavy and they've had two or three inches of rain, they're standing, looking out their front window, and they're watching the water come up and come up and come up, and it's coming up to the doorstep. We've all seen it. They're not thinking about festivals. They're not thinking about culture, they're not thinking about tourism. The only thing they're thinking about is water coming in their house and ruining their lives. And we all know from the flood of August, which we're coming up almost on a year anniversary from, that has been very clear, drilled into my skull, you can't imagine, I'm sure all of us so many times, that the priority is drainage. It's drainage, and it's drainage. It is not culture, it is not tourism. The amount of money that we're talking about here, it would be immediate, it would be recurring, it would be year after year, and people would see a result from using it. Now, whether this council wants to make a decision to reduce an amount, I don't know, I haven't had that discussion with individuals. The people I've spoken to, which were many, all said they want the whole amount moved. Now, whether you guys decide to or not, um, uh, you know, it goes back to the old adage that we are supposed to do what the people we represent want. And that is entirely what I'm doing, and I don't think it's a surprise to many of you up here that I was gonna do this one way or the other, cause we know that, number one, that's my norm. Number two-
No.
Yeah, and number two, uh, it is the right thing to do. It is the priority to the people in my district, and it should be to all the other districts, the people. When they're watching that water coming up, and I'll tell you what, I don't believe any council members up here flooded. I know Mr. Dooyall's home flooded. So, uh, once you experience that, it will change your mind very, very quick. So with that said, you know, you guys make a decision, I'm gonna stand by my amendment. I wanna move the whole amount to drainage, Mr. Lewis, I appreciate that. I mean, um, we can vote on it a percentage as you want, although I, I don't think this council supports it, but my amendment would be initially to move the whole amount into drainage, which is absolutely the priority in my mind at this point. That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kong?
Mr. Robideau, in doing the math on what you're proposing, we're currently bringing in 7 and 1/2 million dollars on the drainage property tax, correct?
Correct.
And the proposition would, uh, take 9 million of reserve funds that exist today in that property tax and immediately apply it to drainage.
That is correct.
So you would have 16 and 1/2 million dollars moving forward from, uh, November 1 to address drainage issues.
A little bit more than that because of the, the other piece of the ballot language, but yes. It would be the 9 plus the 2 and 1/2 million additional millage that we're moving over. So the, the drainage would get, the 7 and 1/2 would get an additional 2 and 1/2 million this year and every year thereafter, to be 10 million a year instead of 7 and 1/2 million. And then on top of that, I'm moving 9 million of the surplus, the savings account that the Public Health Unit has accumulated. I'm moving 9 of that 10 million into drainage to be able to spend immediately.
So we're not ignoring the drainage issue?
Far from it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, Mr. Esq, Mr. Terrio has offered an amendment to take the .25 mils that President, Mayor President Robideau was going to dedicate to the Create Initiative and lump that into the entire drainage.
Right.
So I would ask at this time that you share some wording with us in the form of what the amendment would sound like, and then I would ask Mr. Terrio if he's satisfied with that, to use that as his motion and see if someone would say-
Sure.
Thank you.
Within the resolution under Section 1, in the indented section of the language, that is the proposed proposition, midway in that paragraph, starting with Romanet 1, which is the open parentheses, little i, closed parentheses, instead of 1.1 mils, that would change to 1.35 mils, which is all I'm doing is adding the .25 into that. After the comma on Parish, which ends the phrase of Romanet 1, the next phrase which starts with an open parentheses, Romanet 2, would be deleted all the way through to the comma after the word economies. The next word then picks up as and, A-N-D, and the Romanet 3 is changed to Romanet 2. Those identical changes will also have to be made in Exhibit A to the resolution, which is the proposed advertisement, and they are identical changes because the language is identical from the resolution.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Terrio, does that satisfy you?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. Terrio has a motion on the floor to amend according to the language that has been shared by council. Does he have a second? One at a time. Does Mr. Terrio have a second on his amendment?
Second.
Second by Bellard, okay. So we have an amendment on the floor. There's no council discussion related to that. We're gonna hold that amendment for now, and because there's an amendment, we're gonna open up the floor for public, uh, comment on the amendment. This'll be the amendment only. For those who have signed in to speak, you could speak to this amendment. If you do not, you will still have the opportunity to speak to the resolution as it is, whether it gets amended or not. So you still have the opportunity to speak. This is just an opportunity to speak to the amendment. Madam Clerk, first speaker, please. And if you, I'm sorry, if you say you wanna wait until the resolution, whether this passes or not, you could just simply indicate that from your seat. Sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Kim Goodell.
Until the final, okay?
Andrew Abear. You wait.
Okay.
Sarah Buchanan. Abby Pelafig.
Hi, I'm Abby Pelafig.
Put that mic down for me, please, thank you.
Abby Pelafig, I'm a Ms., uh, resident of Milcrey Cove. These are my neighbors. We are the faces who flooded. We're the faces who panic, her children cry. We're the people who, every single time it rains, have complete meltdowns because we don't know if our homes are gonna flood again. You know, four feet of water in my front yard is unacceptable in a no flood zone. So I'm sorry that I'm gonna have to disagree with you, Mr. Nakka, and all of those who think that flooding is not the priority at this moment, but these are our faces and these are our families. I support Mr. Terrio, he's helped us in every way possible, and I can't thank him enough. And I'm gonna ask for your support on this amendment, cause I'm not saying that you can't have your Create Initiative, I'm just saying not now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nakka?
Just like to say for the record, my comments is not saying that drainage is not important, that your family doesn't matter, or four foot of water in a- 12 million dollars is being put into drainage through this initiative. That was never done before. So to say that it doesn't matter, or it's not a priority for me or anyone else, is a false statement. Cause I'm supporting fixing drainage and doing projects, which is gonna bring 12 million dollars to drainage projects. So it's okay that we disagree, but I'm not gonna take the comment that I'm disregarding or that drainage is not my priority. You can ask former Public Works Director, and you will probably ask Mr. Dubrock here shortly. I take personal visits to all my people that have drainage issues. Try to do the best we can. Years passed, whether Mr. Terrio wanted to, which he did, there was no money allowed to do any improvements to drainage. Now, tonight, we have an op, uh, opportunity to support going to the voters to rededicating, which so many people have said, why don't you use money that's in other accounts instead of asking for a new tax? So we're doing that. But in the same breath, it's 12 million dollars of drainage, so there's gonna be some improvement. So it's not like we're saying drainage is not a priority, Create is? No, look at the numbers, it's 500,000, 12 million. We're trying to utilize and do the best that we can. I just feel that it's a good initiative, and I think drainage is the priority, number one. And in the process, we're allowed to do some other things that help promote our culture at the same time. So I definitely think that drainage is a priority, and I wanna make that clear. To lessen drainage or to lower millage and drainage and put more in Create, then you can talk to me and tell me that drainage is not, that, that I'm putting Create over drainage. At that point, then my priorities would not be correct. But drainage is having the most attention, and we're taking care of something that's also important, but the emphasis is on drainage. So that's, you know, I appreciate your comment. I feel very bad for you and everyone else that has flooded, but it's not, Create is not taking priority over drainage. Thank you.
Mr. Terrio?
Yes, I wanna clarify, um, a couple of numbers, I think the administration and a few others mentioned that we're gonna spend-
Mr. Terrio, if you don't mind, with all due respect, if you, if the young lady had spoken, we have gone into public comments before you go into the clarification of numbers, if we could finish that public comment on the amendment first, I would prefer that. I thought she was gonna address something that she just-
I was gonna address something that was just brought up, but let me make note of it, and then, uh, we can come back to it.
Okay.
Please remind me, thank you.
Thank you much. Okay, let's continue with public comment on the amendment for those who would like to speak at this point.
Margaret Delkins. She'll wait. Dr. Michael Walden. Okay, and as it relates to the amendment, uh, two citizens signed in, did not wish to speak, uh, but signed in to support the drainage component only. And then two citizens signed in, uh, to support the rededication. However, these citizens signed in do not support the cultural component, the Create, the Create Initiative.
Okay. Mr. Terrio, for some clarity?
Yes, um, I think what was mentioned is that you said y'all were initially putting 12 million dollars into drainage, immediately, is that a correct number, sir?
The drainage, uh, millage brings in 7 and 1/2 million. This ballot language rededication will bring in an annual additional 2 and 1/2 million plus a one-time, uh, allocation of 9 million. So it'll be 9 plus 2 and 1/2, it'll be the 11 and 1/2 in addition to the existing 7 and 1/2.
1, 5, 7, 1/2, okay.
And, and understand those are rounded numbers, it could be 50,000 one way or the other.
Gotcha.
It just depends on the set values and all that.
Yes, sir. With that said, we've got roughly 245,000 people or more, don't hold me to that number, in Lafayette Parish. We're looking at nine districts, each district usually has somewhere around 25, 30,000 or more people. We could spend 20 million dollars in my district alone, which we know that is not gonna happen, and we still wouldn't be able to solve all the issues with drainage. We could spend 10 million in District 3. We could spend, uh, 15 million in, uh, in, in Carncroft. There are issues that need to be resolved. We have so many drainage laterals that haven't been touched in 35 years, not the fault of this administration, I wanna make it clear. There are so many laterals that need to be dug, so many areas that need to be cleaned, so many trees that need to be taken out. It's just, uh, in the unincorporated, if I'm not mistaken, I think we have one drainage crew that handles the whole unincorporated area. One drainage crew, let me, let me give you an idea. We're talking about an operator with one machine that's supposed to maintain everything in the unincorporated areas, not necessarily limits of Lafayette or any other municipality. So with that said, how fast will we be able to, uh, accomplish the goal of addressing the flooding issues that has affected so many all across Lafayette Parish, in every district, not just mine? But again, I'm, I know it's not gonna happen, but we, I, trust me, I've got 20 million dollars easy worth of ditches just in that area that could be cleaned out. So, uh, I just don't see it. So with the amount that we have here, the portion that's added to it, again, I still see it, I am gonna agree with the people that I represent that the priority now is drainage, and, uh, I wish to proceed with, with the amendment. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so what we're gonna do now, we've had everyone who had signed in to speak, we had, we addressed them as it relates to the amendment and and council discussion is, 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 has been completed. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna vote on the amendment that Mr. Terrio has put out, Mr. Bellard has second, and that's basically to dedicate all of the, um, funding through the rededication to drainage only, in the words of, of Mr. Esq, which was much better, okay? All right, call for the vote.
District 4?
No.
District 5? District 6?
No.
District 7?
No.
District 8?
No.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
No.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
Motion to amend fails.
Mr. Robideau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanna briefly, before you take the vote on the final amendment, let you know that something that Mr. Terrio said I do actually agree with as it relates to this, this ballot language. You know, I've asked Public Works to, to provide me with an analysis of, of what, what dollar figure is out there as it relates to fixing our drainage problems. And, um, and so they provided me with the most critical needs. Uh, there's about 63 miles that's gonna cost well over 20 million dollars. And if they continued the list of what needs to be accomplished, it's in the neighborhood of 60 to 80 million dollars of drainage work that needs to be done throughout the Parish of Lafayette. So I, I'm sure there's some discussions we'll have for a later, uh, time, but as it stands right now, this is 11 and 1/2 million more that's gonna go to drainage than ever has. And so I would appreciate your support, but it's far, far short of what's needed for drainage.
Mr. Robideau, with all due respect, former Public Works Director Tom Carroll provided us with some numbers as we did this parish funding evaluation situation. And, um, just to clean five channels. Cause when we look at drainage, drainage is everything from, um, the ditches in front of the home, the roadways that is actually designed to hold water for a short period of time, to what is acceptable, reasonably acceptable to come in- to what is acceptable, reasonably acceptable to come into the yard without flooding homes, as well as the major channels that lead to our bayous, that leads to the river, that leads to the basin. And just for five channels, he gave us a figure of 80 million to snag and drag, and I think Councilman Castile, Nakane, Conker attested to that, and we could provide that report. So that was 80 millions just to clean five channels. So like you, I'm in agreement that we're not nowhere near. So if we want to have a more robust discussion on how we generate funds, I'm definitely open to that, but it's not gonna all come from one place. And I think that this discussion has been healthy to maybe show the people exactly what's needed, and what needs to be considered going forward in the future. But is, you know, the idea of taking from Peter to pay Paul, it's not gonna work all the time. It was mentioned that some folks made a amendment last time this was considered as it relates to drainage. Well, this money is, some of this money came from healthcare, and I appreciate the fact that you involved Dr. Stefanski with our health unit in this conversation this time, because last time, that wasn't afforded, okay? And there are some serious healthcare needs, because I could tell you, all you have to do is put the issue at the time in front of people, and you're gonna have a group of people who's gonna come out. And Lafayette has been fortunate to not have any contaminations in their water, Lafayette has been fortunate to not have any West Nile or any other mosquito-type diseases, and a lot of that is due to our health unit and the programs that they offer. Wellness and immunizations, their parishes have discontinued immunizations. So I could tell you from a healthcare perspective, if we was to bring this issue from that perspective, we had doctors come in last time and talk about why we shouldn't do certain things. Today is drainage, and tomorrow, I promise you, it'll be something else. What I appreciate is that you involved everybody in the conversation, and the percentile is still more significant in the area of drainage. So, you know, it is what it is, we are nowhere near addressing the drainage problems for the city and parish of Lafayette, as it relates to the needs. This is just one step, and I know there are other ideas coming forth in the future, and just like it was indicated, that what happens with the Create Initiative will grow over time, so will the drainage component will grow over time as well. So what is being done today will grow, actually, at the same rate, okay? So we need to say the whole statement and put all the information out when we make those types of comments. So, you know, I'm gonna support it, that's a no-brainer, because I think this is a move in the right direction, when you look at the full responsibility of governance. If you get tunnel vision and only look at one thing, shame on you as a person who governs, and tell people and say things that's misleading to people. This is only one component of a big, 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 huge picture of things that we deal with. So, thank you for that, and we'll see how this lays out. We have some more public council members comment, then we're gonna move to public discussion and hear what the rest of the people have to say. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I can sympathize with the people that's here from the subdivision about how their homes was flooded, the last flood we have. There's a lot going on, especially in all districts, there's, like you said, Mr. Pudro, the drainage, the West Nile, we're lucky we didn't have these cases, but again, I can sympathize with what's going on, and I hate to give the people the impression that we're not concerned about what's going on as far as the drainage, the flooding that happened in their homes. And I know what Mr. Nakane is saying, but again, when people, when it's time for Festment International and Mardi Gras, and what have, but if your house got flooded out, you're not concerned about that. You're concerned about getting your house fixed and living back in your house the best way you can. And I know Mr. Lowell's house was flooded a while back as well, he's still working on that. So, my amendment would be, instead of doing away with the Create Initiative, I know we supporting it, but I'd like to perhaps maybe lessen the amount that I said earlier, maybe dropping it down to 200,000 dollars. I just want them to know that we are concerned, and we are thinking about them, so if I can get a supportive amendment, I'd like to see the Create Initiative move forward, and I know that possibly can bring some more revenues to help the drainage out. But again, there's a lot, like Mr. Terrio said, there's one truck, one drain that's taking care of, how many people are there? How many did you say, Mr. Terrio? Well, I know I need some drainage work done bad in the district I represent, it's not nearly like what you have, but I know that I have an issue as well. And that's also some issue with other areas, the health unit is having problems, I'm having problems, I've been getting a lot of, you know, concern about what's going on right now, so that'd be my initiative, my amendment, if I can. Where's the attorney? Left?
Might have left, but we could start the process, so what you want to do, do you have a percentile of the mill you want to recommend, or you're trying to get to a dollar figure?
I'm trying to get to a dollar figure.
And that dollar figure is 200,000?
200,000, yeah.
That's what you want to be peeled off to going to Create?
Yeah.
And everything else would go in?
Correct.
Got some accountants over there, they're working on some numbers for us, yeah. Okay, well, I want to get the language right before we actually... Point was, I'm sorry. Okay. That's what you had? Okay. Okay, there's another amendment being offered, before we go any further, there's another amendment being offered by Councilman Lewis, to reduce the revenue going into the Create Initiative to .15 mills, and the balance, again, going into the full drainage millage to go over to drainage. Mr. Eschott, just to bring you up to speed, basically, we have the exact same amendment, the difference is, Mr. Lewis is going .15 rather than the .25 that Mr. Terrio had recommended.
So, let me make sure I understand this...
Yes, sir.
Before I give you the verbiage of how that would occur. The Create Initiative, Romanate 2, would stay in place, the percentage of mills would simply go from .25 to .15, and the 1.1 mills would be increased to 1.20 mills. Is that correct? What's the, 3.56 is what we're trying to get to? All right, let me check just to make sure. 1.2 plus .15 plus 2.21, 3.56. Okay, that's right. All right, so the amendment would be, in the indented language of Section 1 of the resolution, change under Romanate 1, 1.1, that would change to 1.20. In Romanate 2, that would remain in place, but the .25 would simply change to .15, and those identical changes would occur in Exhibit A to the resolution for the same reasons. Okay, so that, Mr. Lewis, if you're in agreement, you're offering that as an amendment, and Mr. Bellard is seconding that?
Okay, there's an amendment on the floor that has been moved and seconded, Ms. Eber, is that to the amendment?
Uh, can we actually do?
Absolutely. Okay, Ms. Eber?
Mayor President, I know that part of our plans for Create was to automatically go into the grant process to collect more funds to pad that 500,000 dollars. For the particular grants that we were looking to apply for, the amount of money that we're amending it for, can we still do that?
Certainly, one of the considerations for the money that will be established for the Create Initiative, one of the ideas would be to only use that money as matching money. So if it is in fact a half a million, then we would go to the Kreske Foundation, Ford Foundation, all the different foundations, and try to secure as much as we could, and if it's, you know, if it's a dollar-for-dollar grant, then we would get another half million from those foundations. If it's a, if we gotta match 25 cents for every dollar, then you may be able to go get 2 million dollars of grant money with the 500,000 that we had. So, whatever that's reduced to, it's gonna limit you by that amount as to, you know, what you can do. So, you know, it's just a mathematical formula. Is that to say, there would be some, that it would move us under and we wouldn't be able to apply for those grants? Yes. But I couldn't tell you with any specificity.
All right, thank you for that, and then also, something that I want confirmed, and I want the public to know and understand, is if this does indeed pass, and it does indeed go on the ballot, I know some people would be wary to support this rededication, not a new tax, but a rededication, because Create is not on there, and that is not going all to drainage. What happens if this does not pass? What happens, do we still get some money for this? I want to make sure people understand, if they vote no to this, what can happen if it does not pass?
Yeah, well certainly, if the council votes it down tonight, then the public will not have the option to vote on it. If the public votes it down on the November ballot, then that means we'll continue to have 7.5 million dollars for drainage, and we won't have the 9 million dollars of one-time money, and the 2.5 million dollars a year for drainage from this point forward.
Okay.
It just, I mean, that won't be an option.
Okay, that's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nakane?
Since we're talking about drainage, and you mentioned the 20 million, or the 20 million 500, Mr. Terrio, or as a whole, it seems like we need more money in drainage. Anybody want to add to the drainage? Can we, you know, can we go up on the mills? Can we ask the voters for more money? Obviously, it's one of those situations that, you know, what, I mean, what's the priority here? I mean, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that no matter if we do 20 million, it's still not gonna get all the drainage done, so we're bickering about 500,000. So if we want to go to 80, does the public want to go to 80? Do we want to eliminate all the possible? I mean, that's, that's a real discussion at this point, as far as for in the future. Now, I don't want to sabotage what you've done and what's here, but I'd like to have that discussion more often, because I would be in support of increasing it. If the report says we got five Cooley's, it takes 80 million dollars, and that's our priority, then surely the residents in the community, if they're flooding, would want to come up and say, "I want to make sure it gets done." Because we heard tonight that the 20 million, or the 12 million, will get some things done, but that does not fix the entire parish of drainage. So while we're in support of, we need more in drainage, we need more in drainage, then maybe we need to get this thing done and see how the public reacts, and if we still got drainage, we might have to, as a community, look and say, "We may need to pay more." I don't know what to do, because you can't keep cutting, I mean, you're doing a one-time, how much money we're spending, a one-time deal?
For drainage on this?
Yeah, if it passes.
We're gonna have an additional 9 million, one time?
One time.
And 2.5 million additional every year.
Okay.
And if I have any influence at all, I would want y'all to have that discussion after the vote.
I got you, but I just wanted to make it clear. Thank you.
I wouldn't allow it, not anyway.
Just making sure.
I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakane. Okay, all right, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna move to public discussion for the sake of being totally transparent, and as well as making sure that we don't violate any open meeting laws, we're gonna go through the individuals who signed in to speak on the resolution, we're gonna go through their names again, to see if you want to speak to the amendment that Councilman Lewis has offered, and Councilman Bellard has seconded. This is for the amendment, and yet again, you still have an opportunity to speak on the resolution as a whole, after the fact. Clerk?
Kim Goodell.
Okay.
Andrew Eber, pass. Sarah Buchanan, pass. Abby... Oh, she, I think she stepped out.
She did.
Margaret Delkins, pass. Dr. Michael Walden, pass. And based on the discussion, we had one person who had signed in, did not wish to speak, but based on the discussion, she would like to speak, Jackie Lyle.
And this is to, just as, this is to the amendment, at this point, of the .15 mill max.
Gotcha. So, I'm Jackie Lyle, as some of you know, I've been a long-time worker in the not-for-profit performing arts community in Lafayette, as well as represented our city across the nation in other projects. And at PASA, which I started in 1989 and ran, we had a rule, we cannot afford to do anything cheap, we can only afford to do it right. So, cheap means that you do it, and you do it poorly, because you don't allocate the resource to it, whether it's human resource or financial resource. So, with all due respect to Mr. Lewis's amendment, we can't afford to do this cheap. Thank you.
Mr. Terrio?
Ms. Lyle, you don't need to come back up, but just to respond to that, the people I represent more or less say the same thing about our drainage. We've been doing it pretty cheap, about all the drainage canals, the laterals, and all the ditches that are clogged up, so we hear it from both sides. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we've had council discussion on the amendment, and we've heard from every person in the public who wants to speak to the amendment, therefore, we're gonna call the vote on the amendment, again, offered by Lewis and seconded by Bellard.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
No.
District 8?
No.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
No.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to amend fails.
Okay, so, we've gotten through all of our amendments, the resolution remains intact as it was presented, let's now move to public comment on the resolution as is, please. Public comment, so for those who name is called, this is definitely the time to speak, don't pass up on this one.
Kim Goodell?
I want to thank you all for the discussion, I think it helps me with a lot of the concerns that I had with the resolution. With reference to proposed Resolution R 032 2017, I submit the following comments to Mayor President Joe Robidoux and his staff, as well as the Lafayette Parish Council members that will be voting today on the resolution. Except for millage rededication factors and total dollar surplus to date, the documents furnished have little detail, therefore, my comments are brief, more conceptual rather than specific. It's my understanding that the bulk of the tax collected today goes towards operation and maintenance of our public health unit, and more recently was expanded to include mosquito control and our planned animal no-kill shelter. My questions are, come in three categories, or concerns, I should say. The first is with regard to the public health tax surplus. Are there public health needs of the community that are not being served by the health unit? As a community with this surplus, should we contemplate first the public health needs of the poor, the elderly, the homeless, the mentally ill? Those populations are growing in number, more and more, the state is cutting back and leaving these issues to cities and local municipalities to solve. Access to clean, healthy water directly translates to good public health, and whether you live in the city or rural areas, should we spend some of the surplus to assess these needs and more comprehensively test our drinking water and our sewage treatment facilities? How clean and healthy is our natural environment? What effect does our built environment and industrial pollution have on our public health? Where can we improve with these surplus dollars? The second area is with regard to the drainage projects, I see stormwater management amid I see stormwater management amid solving drainage problems parish-wide as well as on a watershed basis as a necessity and rightfully so, having a direct correlation of public health. So I am conceptually in favor of a portion of the public health tax going towards solving these issues. My concern is when will these projects be identified along with a cost estimate and expected timeline and made available to the public? The third area is with regard to Create, the proposed tax dedication. And please don't understand me, um, I have a very real appreciation for the economies that come with increased tourism, a unique culture, the arts, and a very creative community that we do have here. I fully support the initiative that Mayor Robideau proposed. However, I don't think it should be funded with the public health surplus for reasons I mentioned earlier. I'm not comfortable saying we have as great a surplus as we think until we assess the full needs of public health, including environmental health, homelessness, and mental health issues that can only be expected to grow in this area. I believe other budgets such as tourism, et cetera, would be more appropriate for the Create Initiative. In closing, I ask you all to consider my comments and know that unless more detail is made available to the public, it will be difficult for the average citizen to make an informed decision when it comes time to vote in November. More and more, your constituents want to be involved in these decisions that affect the future of the city and just what we leave behind for the next generation to contend with. Thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Andrew A. Bear.
Good evening. Wish to offer you a little history. My father wrote a diary in 1940. There was a flood exactly like this when it occurred in May. It flooded the entire area. As you can see, the Vermillion River stage, my time went off.
Time is up.
Oh, well, you can only get what you can get. Thank you, I appreciate that. No, in 1940, it flooded just like it did. Five days of rain, no hurricane, no tropical depression, set the Vermillion River maximum stage at 25 feet. The flood we just had was only at 20.5 feet. So the people that flooded, watch out. Two things. One, I don't know if you're familiar with this flood document, Lafayette Parish flood control document done in 1995? I'll catch it. It's available online. I have it electronically copied. If you'd like a copy, please contact me. It tells you a lot about the Youngsville area and the flooding issues they have area, that, in that area, and how retention ponds need to be built, not just drainage channels dug. Because I'm one of those flood victims. My ex-wife's house flooded. She sold it. She couldn't fix it. So I understand where the river is. Two things that occur when you do a drainage project. You allow the water to get out fast, but remember during hurricane season, it allows the water to go back just as fast. So you get, be careful, and, and I know the engineers know how to do that, but I think we need to look at some retention areas for these drainage projects, not just dredging and opening the channels. Because the river goes fast. I mean, we know that from Scott when they did the Ildakon. Rains come from the west during frontal passages. Scott drains first, heads to the river on Ildakon, and the river flows backwards from that point on because that forms a high water mark. So in the drainage that we do, we need to look at some way to save or hold that water in those areas. I would like for you to amend this to say city parish property tax, as I did on the other one. I know, I know y'all think it's kind of silly, but, uh, I think, Mr. Terrio, I appreciate you mentioning that this is a parish-wide vote and all of you represent an equal number of parish voters, but on the city side you don't. And that's what concerns me. I'm just looking for taxation with equal representation. And I think as a united city parish government, emerged government, I think we can get that. And it would be nice if we could have rolled back the millage on the health, you know, when you had that surplus. Then perhaps you could have came to the citizens and said, we have a drainage problem. Would you vote for a strictly drainage tax? And the other question I ask is, this is a parish-wide tax. Will there be intergovernmental agreements with the towns that are not part of consolidation on the expenditure of those funds? Or will we be doing drainage work in those towns that are not part of consolidation? And how's that funding going to take place? And, because it's a parish-wide tax, I understand that. So I think that's a good question to ask. And I appreciate what you're doing. I know you have a tough job. I know funds are limited, but I believe in this area. I believe in this parish, and I believe you guys and ladies have the opportunity to develop us like we should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sarah Buchanan.
Sarah Buchanan.
Hi, I didn't dress up. Oh, well, thank you. Hey, um, I live in the Mil-
Pick your mic up if you'd like.
Oh, I'm, I am tall, right? Um, anyway, I, I work for Sprint Corporation, the phone company, and I work from home every day with the lovely LUS fiber. It rocks. Um, I'm pleased to be here in Lafayette. I've been here for nine years now. I love it. I totally think the, um, Create project sounds neat. It sounds very conceptual from what I hear. Um, I'd be interested to, you know, hear more about it. But I will say, I'm okay with, you know, the 500,000 or what have you, and I know I'm rambling a little bit, but I want to just say thank you to Mr. Terrio for replying to my email, uh, very expeditiously, expeditiously last week, um, and looking into the drainage problem in our subdivision. We didn't have one before. We had the big flood, as everybody knows, everybody did. But we didn't have a drainage problem. There's this new subdivision being built, and I think that might have something to do with it. So I just kindly ask you to continue to looking into this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Abby Pelifi.
Abby?
Margaret Delkins.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Olkers, and, uh, I live in District Four, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Boudreau for all he does for his district. When I first read about, uh, Mayor Robideau's rededication plan, I was impressed with the creativity of the, of the plan, taking, taking, um, public health money and, and aiming it toward drainage. I do believe that drainage falls within the focus of public health. Then I read the proposal in its entirety. In my appeal, in my opinion, the .25 millage for entertainment and tourism should not be included. To take money from public health when our city is in such a precarious economic position is irresponsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Michael Walden.
Again, I'm Dr. Michael Walden. I'm a retired hydrologist. I've worked at LSU and the Institute for Environmental Studies, at UL in civil engineering, and for the federal government as a hydrologist and an expert. When I, well, I oppose this resolution. I believe that much more planning needs to go into how we spend our money on flood management in Lafayette Parish than we've done. I recall long ago, I was at one of our civil engineering functions at UL, and we were talking to some of the people that were doing the new subdivision developments back in the 90s, and I commented, don't you see these people are going to flood? And the reply was, it would cost more money if we had to go out and do things like retention, detention. And who's going to pay for that? Are you going to pay for that? Well, no, but who's paying for it now? It's the people that have moved into those subdivisions and the subdivisions around them that never flooded before that now flood because of the lack of planning. You move on our I-49 connector, planned in the 1990s, zero consideration of the flood impacts of that project in the final environmental impact statement and in anything we've heard from DOTD up to this point. Zero consideration of flood impacts. We need watershed-wide flood management planning. Just going ahead and whack a mole, get this one, get that one, it's, it's really problematic, I believe. When the government spends huge amounts of money, and to me, this is a lot of money, we need to have serious planning. We need to have a, a multi-parish planning for how we're going to control this, uh, this flooding. You know, I've heard people say, well, we should dredge the Vermillion River. Well, that might help in some floods, in other floods, it's likely not to help, and if we get a hurricane-storm surge, it's likely to make it worse. So things get complicated. Much of our floodwater, when we have these big rainstorms, go into the next parish. They go over into St. Martin Parish. We need to be working with St. Martin Parish about that and about where our water goes and where it goes after it gets into St. Martin Parish. Right now, I think a good bit of it just drains right back into the Vermillion when the Vermillion goes down. These things need to be considered, and I oppose this resolution until we do begin to have parish-wide, region-wide flood management planning. It scares me to hear all the talk about drainage. I don't think we have so much a drainage problem as we have a problem that we haven't done proper flood management planning. It'll be expensive, but that's what we need to do. Whack-a-mole drainage projects, I think, are not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terrio.
Yeah, just to clarify something you had mentioned, sir, was, um, you said a good bit of our water goes to St. Martin Parish. As you recall, earlier, the watershed shows, actually, my, my area I represent is South Lafayette, so the majority of Lafayette's water, Broussard and other areas, everything comes down to District Nine. It all comes down this watershed, which, that's more or less what it shows on what they were discussing earlier. So Lake Venure and a number of areas, when Youngsville and our area-
Doc, just making comments, yeah, it's not a response.
Yeah, you don't need to come back.
It's not a, yeah, it's not a discussion.
I just, I just wanted to let you know that whenever we get rain in the area I represent, not only do we have our rain, but we're also taking in additional water from rains on the other areas of the parish. So that's all I had, and wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, please.
Jackie Lyle. She's the final speaker, Mr. Chair.
Um, I, I want to say one thing. When I first heard about the Create Initiative and the, um, the movement of tax dollars from public health to Create, my first concern was public health, Kenneth. Because I'm, I'm a big believer in balancing inequality in our community, and equal access to health is very important, and the health unit does that. Our family has taken advantage of it because it was an affordable way for us to have our vaccinations for our kids, and I want you to know I stand firm there. But to talk about Create, it's been very difficult for me, as much as this is what my whole professional and personal life is about, it's been difficult for me to get a grip on it and a way to really think about it, but sitting back in the corner, I, surprised to be called so soon. I think about it this way, that it's an opportunity for us to build an economic infrastructure using our cultural, artistic, and entertainment assets to enhance opportunities for our citizens and to attract tourists. My understanding, my experience with tourism dollars through LCBC, is that those can be used for capital improvements that a facility can activate to improve their ability to accommodate more visitors. So for instance, folding chairs for the children's museum, that's a capital improvement. For marketing, that's about brochures and advertising, and when the enterprise funds are distributed from LCBC to local applicants, those funds are almost always for marketing. The rest of LCBC's money primarily is spent on marketing our community and getting people to come. The more people we have who come, the more we need assets to attract them to. And in order to have those assets, we need to have opportunities for our citizens. So if this program is designed in a way that provides more content through our parks and recreation systems in much the same way that New Orleans Recreation Department offers 5,000 free dance classes a year to citizens in New Orleans, that's where the beauty comes into place. Because when I say 5,000, I'm not talking about 5,000 people participating. I'm talking about 5,000 free dance classes, some of which have resulted in creating a pre-professional dance company that's performed, of course, in New Orleans publicly at the Joyce Theater in New York City, and which sends dancers who would have not have had another opportunity for training to prominent colleges and universities on scholarships. So this is a very deep opportunity for our community, and it's going to take a lot of people to sit down and think it through. And at the end of the day, I think every single one of you can be very proud of what Create can possibly accomplish. But it will not be accomplished without the input of the vast overview of our community, people who care, people who are opposed to it, so we can help them understand it, and the news media to get behind it and to tell the true story of what it is that makes our community special, how this initiative can maximize that. And also, keep in mind that when people go to places like the Berkshire Mountains for Jacob's Pillow Dance Festival, or go to Chicago for the Ravinia Music Festival, these are major tourism dollars that go into these communities. Right now, we have done great with our tourism opportunities that come through Festival Internationale and through the, um, Festival Zacaréana Creole, but there's so much more that we can do. And this little bit of money can really, really be the seed that helps us do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. Yeah, we, we got some people in line before you, Mr. Lewis, so yeah, we, we got four people want to speak. I'm not going to forget anybody. There's a lot of comments to be made. So, um, any, um, any other blue card sign in with notations or?
Um, as stated earlier, we do have citizens who did not wish to speak but signed in, uh, two citizens signed in to support the drainage, uh, rededication, two citizens signed in to support this drainage reset, rededication. However, those citizens do not support the cultural component or the Create Initiative.
Okay. So I, I tried to capture some questions. There's been a lot of requests to respond to some things, and when able to, I think we try to do that. Um, I think our first speaker talked about the public health needs of the community, and I certainly really do appreciate that. As I indicated, the first time the millage was rededicated, which is three parts, health unit, which had a designated millage, mosquito control, which had a- I certainly really do appreciate that. As I indicated, the first time the millage was rededicated, which is three parts: health unit, which had a designated millage, mosquito control, which had a designated millage, and animal control, which had absolutely nothing, was combined. The comfort that I have going forward is that when Mr. Robideau first indicated that he was considering this, I said, "You have to speak to Dr. Tina Stefanski, who is our medical director at our health unit, to make sure that the needs of the health unit are met into the future." So in response to concerns about community health, and that's why I'd mentioned previously about our track record as far as our water supplies, our track record as it relates to bites and infestations and rabies, and all of the things that the health unit addressed, and Mr. Robideau did that. And Mr. Stefanski, doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Stefanski has signed off on that. So that's the comfort that I get from there. As far as when does projects show up, and the monies, that's going to be done in every single budget cycle. There is zero today, so there's no projects on the books, there's nothing planned, nothing to do. This body here is a policy body. This is the administrative body. They're asking for permission. If we grant the permission, they develop it before they expend anything, they got to come back yet again. That'll be a public setting, it'll be a budgetary process, it'll be a public meeting setting. So that's when those things come back. I think you made a comment on Create, but I'm not sure. Andrew talked about the intergovernmental agreements. I am 100% absolute certain for us to do work in another municipality, yes, it will require intergovernmental agreements, as we do today. The minute we go into city limits, we have adopted many agreements right here at this council. I know specifically with Carrington, we've done some with Youngsville for sure, where Scott as well, where before money can be expended in agreements, who's going to do the design work, the architect work, the actual labor work? All of that is worked out in a public setting. Flood management, that's happening today. Our Public Works Department, and I have to say this because sometimes I think things are said, and it kind of makes our professional people within the department seem like they're doing nothing. And our Public Works Department are headed by engineers, the divisions are headed by engineers. These are not just some Kenneth Boudros walking off the street trying to pick out a project. These are people who went to school for a long time, who does this for a living, did it in the private sector. The gentleman we now have is coming from the private sector into the public sector. So flood management plans, we operate by that. We're not just fly-by-nighting and just what feels good or what makes us happy. And the multi-parish, there's been I don't know how many meetings that has taken place with parish presidents and mayors where appropriate to address everything that's going on in St. Landry, Lafayette, St. Martin, Vermillion, and everyone who's connected. So just know that you can't capture everything at this one single public meeting, but a lot of what you are asking for is actually happening on a daily basis. And the last thing I'm going to say, and then I'm going to open up the floor, Mr. Robideau, you are up next, is, you know, a few people reference him, but I represent Lowell Douillon, and I'm sorry, Lowell, but I represent Lowell, and he flooded. He not in his house today, and he's the chief executive officer who was part of the discussions for this plan. And you know what? I might be wrong, but I would venture to say that if this was a bad, bad thing, a man, we're talking about all the people who flooded, a man who lost everything, I'm assuming is in agreement. And he lives in District Four. We shaded tears together when he flooded. And all I'm saying is that he is in agreement, and please don't speak out of turn, he's in agreement with this proposal. So, you know, as council members, we could talk about a lot of things, okay? We could lean, and we could do this, and we could do that. But this governance that we're responsible for, it's over $750 million that we call a budget. It's massive. It's massive. And these conversations could be turned so easily, so easily, just refocusing the attention. You could rededicate it to a lot of things. I could bring up gun violence next week and pack this place. But that would be very small of me to only look at something that's affecting me when we got to have some confidence in an administrator who's looking at a bigger picture. We some part-time folks up here who try to do some checks and some balances. They get in it every day. And I don't think there's no intent to harm anybody or do anything that would negatively affect the city or the parish in any way. So part of the decision is to have confidence in an administration saying, "You're going to do us right. Won't be opportunity to hold him accountable." Confidence in people who've gone through the hardships that we're actually talking about, confidence in the departments who present the plans to do the things that comes out of these fundings. Some of it is just having confidence in those people. And I'm going to continue to give them the confidence, but I just wanted to capture some of the public comment, mainly about the health unit, the drainage budget, the flood management plan, and the multi-parish cooperation, as well as the intergovernmental agreements. Mr. Robideau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief. And I just wanted to touch on a few things and make sure that the public is aware. When we initiated the task to try to find money for drainage and started looking at all of our millages, we didn't take that task lightly. We looked, we looked very hard at the budgets that fall under Mr. Douillon's purview. Specifically, the public health millage had excess. And so we met with the public health unit, the animal control folks, the mosquito folks, to say, "We're going to leave every dollar that you have in the budget in there."